Everybody ready?
Everybody ready.
Good evening, everyone. Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Steve Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Don Horton.
All here.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Mr. Phillipsen, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pass Councilmember.
Oh, pass Councilmember.
I am a collegiate, two O I, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any requests for deletions or emergency additions, Deb?
The whole agenda.
The whole agenda, okay. I don't know if I can control that, but, okay. Don?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Steve?
Yeah, just something I've been forgetting to talk about before. In March, the Florida Keys Fishing Guides Association put on a great event. It's become an annual event. It's called the Florida Keys Fishing Kids Fishing Seminar, and it's really just an incredible day where a bunch of fishing guides volunteer their time. The park staff comes out and helps a lot, the police, the fire department. We had over 100 children come out there from ages four to 16, learn how to cast a fly rod, a spinning rod, throw a cast net, how to handle a fish, how to tie flies. It's just a great event, and I just want to acknowledge them and the staff in the park for putting this on, and hopefully we can continue it and make it even bigger and better in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, it is good. Anna?
Nothing.
Okay. I want to have a brief conversation about the dog park under mayor council communication. So, put me there. Okay. Public comment. Anything that anyone would like to say?
Yes, we do have some speakers. We'll start with Van Cadenhead, followed by Jill Wishmeyer. We'll start with Joe Wishmeyer.
I don't see Van at the moment, so...
Yeah, disappeared on us.
I'll take his place here. Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Mayor and council, as a concerned citizen and longtime resident of Isla Marada, having a group of people that are under investigation by the state attorney's office deciding who is going to run the village and control our finances is very troubling. In the past, there has been sometimes over 50 applicants that had to be looked into, and after many, many discussions and months among council members, was narrowed down, and eventually, one was selected by a unanimous vote of five to zero. Maybe because of our history of retaining managers, we only had 16 applicants this time. This council voted, not unanimously, to only interview six of the candidates. Only four showed up to be interviewed. Then there was a meeting among the five of you with not one person from the public allowed to attend. This action, again, seemed a little questionable. Since then, one more candidate has withdrawn. Tonight, you will vote among the three remaining candidates. While they all seem very qualified, we should question how much administrative experience running a city or village on a day-to-day basis they have. Maybe you should also look into the 12 candidates that you didn't even look into before to make sure that we are getting the best person for our village. As a reminder, in the past, all managers have been elected by a unanimous vote. Single, as I say, all council members have to deal with the manager. That's why it should be always a unanimous decision. Good luck with that, since there is a little dysfunction among the council members with one trying to belittle another one. These actions are very unprofessional and should not be tolerated by the mayor and public. Our community is already divided, and we need a qualified manager to help heal us, not just one who agrees with your individual agendas of pro-development. Lastly, council procedure states that agenda items be placed on the agenda in advance of the meeting. By discussing an appeal that was not on the agenda and then taking a consensus to move forward, costing the taxpayers even more money on this case was unacceptable, especially since the judge was very critical of the planning department and the village attorney in this case. This, of course, was done without any public comment. For a council that keeps talking about council procedures, apparently following them, is only when it is convenient for you. Let's all follow the rules and try to build confidence, unity, and trust among council members and our community. Thank you.
Marnie?
Next up is Van Cadenhead.
Good evening, council. I'm Van Cadenhead. I've been standing at this podium since 1998, in this room and other rooms, since the incorporation of the Village of Isla Marada. And in those 26 years, I have tried my darndest to establish a program amongst the councils, various councils that I've spoken before, that was centered on providing workforce housing for the people that make Isla Marada work. Now, the fire that we had and the traffic that we have undercuts and underlines the problem it is to get our workforce from Homestead on a bus and have these people drive back and forth every day, an hour and a half from Dade County to come here to work. So, I'm hoping that with what you heard from the charrette, in the last charrette, that you would concentrate your efforts in the upcoming months in providing for workforce housing, by which I'm talking not $2,500 a month, three twos that you give the land to Habitat for Humanity to do. I mean, that makes money, but it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is busboys and waitresses and bartenders and people that work in the motels would be much better off if they had a studio efficiency or some kind of a 400 or 500 square foot room that they could spend $1,000 a month for, and then they would be able to be here. They would be able to be here during Christmas season. We had a Christmas season not long ago where they didn't have a second shift at Chico Lodge or the Islander, and they had to give away rooms to the help so that they would have somebody there to work the next day, because the buses couldn't get down through the traffic jam. So, I mean, you're shooting yourselves in the foot, I believe, by not paying attention to this problem, and it's been an ongoing problem. Like I say, I've been trying to push this for 26 years, and it's a brick wall, and all I've really gotten in 26 years is a bloody head. But I'd really like to see with the input that you get from Able Cities East and the input that you heard from the people of this town, that we need affordable housing, and I mean affordable workforce housing, not affordable housing for somebody to come in and buy up all the property and then turn it into vacation rentals. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Marnie.
Thank you, Van.
Next is Sue Miller, representing the Isla Marada Community Alliance.
Sue Miller, representing the Isla Marada Community Alliance. Imagine a government where everybody agreed on everything, where no one ever questions authority, and where the leaders followed without hesitation. While it might sound peaceful, such a government would lack the dynamic exchange of ideas that fuels progress. Dissent is the lifeblood of democracy. It's the voice that says, "Wait a minute, is this the best way?" Democracies generally tolerate dissent, recognizing it as essential for healthy debate and accountability. But apparently dissent is not well tolerated in Isla Marada, as witnessed last Tuesday when Mr. Freeman was lectured on how democracies work and accused of using hyperbole and innuendos instead of facts when he sends updates to his constituents. Steve was criticized for voicing concern about the council meeting on March 29th that was not noticed to the public and was therefore in violation of the Sunshine Law. I agree with Steve. Council meetings have consistently been noticed on the village meeting calendar, the calendar that has the date and time of the meetings in large, bright blue blocks on the left, and the public notice and agenda links to the right. The March 29th meeting was not there. Meeting notices are required in a particular format by Florida law. The village seemed to have violated the Sunshine Law as to form and lack of ability for the public to find the notice. Public notice of candidate interviews that day was noticed, though not on the village council meeting calendar, but no notice to the public that a council meeting would follow. Everyone should ask to be added to Steve's email distribution list. Other council members might want to follow Steve's lead and communicate regularly with constituents. Mr. Friedman was scolded for not understanding government processes. What processes are more critical than the village charter? Section 58(c) of the village charter states, and I quote, "All actions of the village council shall be by ordinance, resolution, or motion." Yet, at the Tuesday meeting, four members of the council asked the village attorney to an appeal, an appellate court decision, an issue not on the agenda, no acknowledgment of likely cost to taxpayers, no motion made, just basically four thumbs up. So, who needs a lesson on government rules? The village should be doing everything possible to promote public participation. It's sad to see the negative reaction of council so often during public comment. There's no one that cares more than Van Cadenhead, and how many of you listen to the wise comments made by Van? Tuesday's consent agenda approved over $1 million in taxpayers' costs with not a word of explanation or discussion by the council. Maybe a rule should limit how much cost can be approved via the consent agenda. Today, the selection of our next village manager may be decided. Whoever manages the village must be able to work with all five of you, not just the majority. As a new village in 1998, five city managers from towns in South Dade came to Isla Marada to offer their assistance as the new village was formed. All five emphasized the critical importance of a unanimous vote for manager. Every single vote for manager since 1998 has specifically required a unanimous vote. Never have we had a selection process quite like this one. Just 16 candidates applied and 12 were eliminated without being interviewed or ranked, and one of the four interviewed withdrew. This decision will be the most important decision you make in your term as in office. You need to make it wisely, publicly, and unanimously. Let's face it, I'm a dissenter, but I bet I'm not alone. You need to do far more to encourage public participation. We have such smart people in this community. Listen to all of them, whether you agree with them or not. You may get some fresh ideas and great advice, and you may be the voice that said, "Wait a minute, is this the best way?" Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Marnie?
There's no one else signed up.
Okay, public comment is now closed.
Here, here.
Let's move on to the mayor council communication, and I would like to briefly talk about the dog park again. I was sort of, didn't express how greatly I thought we should honor Mangrove Mike, and I do. And I was sort of, the next day, I got probably 35, 40 phone calls in favor of it. A lot of people, and not a single other name was brought up for the park except for Mangrove. Also, I was approached by a group of people who want to form a committee and come up with some thoughts on what we should do. So, I guess, Sheila, what I'm looking for is, can we move this along, and how do we go about doing it? Because I wasn't clear after the meeting where we were at. So, if you would, please.
Yes. My understanding was that we were going to bring back a resolution at the May meeting to rename the dog park.
Okay.
The only clarification we would need would be the exact naming. Would it be Mike Forrester, Mangrove Mike?
Can we let the committee, the people who came forward and said they would like to form a committee, can we let them come back with some suggestions in that way? How does that work?
I think the council would need to authorize the creation of a committee, and then we would need to come up with some qualifications or some consensus, at least, as to who would be a member of that committee.
I can tell you who approached me was Paul Meany, who was a very good friend of Mangrove's. And he would be willing, so I don't know if you want to get with him or if anybody has any other thoughts, but I'd like to move this forward. It's been a while, so. And since we're redoing the park, it's a perfect timing. So, how do we do this? Clearly, they don't know.
I have a suggestion.
Oh, go ahead, Deb.
So that we can move it along, because I was under the impression that we'd have a resolution come May.
Okay.
Maybe those people can get together. It's not a formal committee, and just submit names for them to present to us in our council communication for the next meeting, and we can kind of leave the blank in the resolution, I'm asking, for the official name?
Yeah, because the title, we can just call it, you know, the, normally, we put the name, but I can adjust the title so it's more generic, and then that way you all can approve whatever the name is for the dog park.
And the only thing I was trying to get across on Tuesday night was I didn't know whether, we've named things before, and I was just trying to figure out if we had a procedure already in place.
Okay. So, I guess I'll have Paul reach out to you. Sheila? And then, they want to...
Yes. Do you want the resolution to come back without a specific name first, and then reach out to the committee, or do you want to have a resolution that adopts a committee, and then we can move forward with that committee?
Whatever. My suggestion would be that we come back with a resolution with the name blank, if you can figure out how to do the title. And those people that want to gather, it's not a formal committee, they call the village and submit what they think would be appropriate names to choose from.
Is that okay?
Does that work?
It works for me, I'm looking at Sheila.
Okay.
Of course, go ahead.
I don't think it should be limited to just those people, maybe anybody who wants to...
Well, they can reach out. Paul told me...
Anybody wants to submit something...
Paul said, "Reach out to him."
Because it's not a formal committee, you know, anybody could...
But I'm saying, let anybody...
Yeah.
I didn't, I wasn't trying to limit it.
Right now, I'm just making sure it's very clear to everybody that everybody has the opportunity.
And Paul said, "Reach out to him," so, if it's for anybody who wants to help...
So, anybody can call the village, or anybody can talk to Paul.
Is that agreeable? Okay?
Yeah, we can put that, we can put that out on the website.
Thank you very, very much.
And then, once we, we'll bring back the resolution with a generic name, and then once the committee decides, we'll clarify that.
Maybe it can go in the newsletter, too.
Absolutely, newsletter, newsflash, social media, all of those things.
I think we owe it to him. He did a lot for this community, so, thank you, everybody. Okay. Moving on, village attorney?
Nope, nothing from me.
Okay. Then I guess we're moving on. John?
Yep, we are on tab A. Tab A is a resolution of the village council of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, considering administrative appeal number PLADA 20240251 filed by Barton W. Smith, agent for 81641 Isla Marada LLC, appellant relating to an administrative decision and interpretation by the director of planning, denial of a vacation rental license for property located at 81641 Old Highway, having real estate number 00401660-000000 on Upper Medicumby Key, as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this resolution to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon approval of this resolution from the State Department of Commerce.
Jennifer?
Good evening. Jennifer DeBovere, I'm planning director. I'm here this evening for the administrative appeal that was filed relating to the denial of a vacation rental license for the property located at 81641 Old Highway. This property is within the Village Center zoning district and is within the mixed-use flum, which is allowed to have a vacation rental license. However, it is a commercial property that houses a residential space above it. Our zoning code defines a vacation rental unit as one that is within a single-family dwelling unit or a multifamily dwelling unit or a mobile home. So, we interpret that to not include residential properties above commercial facilities, because those would be considered mixed use. Our code does not define single-family dwelling unit or multifamily dwelling unit, neither does the building code. So, we have to rely on dictionary definitions. I brought with me two typical dictionaries that planners use in the course of doing business, the Planner's Dictionary and the latest Illustrated Book of Development definitions, which both describe the types of single-family, multifamily dwelling units as standalone structures, not above a commercial building. So, that is why we denied the vacation rental license. We have been consistent in this practice. I will note that the original denial identified the property as solely commercial and not mixed-use, and that was why a corrected denial was sent to the applicant. And we stand by our position that the vacation rental license is not allowed at this time at this property. We're not arguing that he does not have a residential property above the commercial, it's just not eligible for a vacation rental license at this time.
Open public comment now, or...
I think the applicant has a presentation.
It's like you're reading something.
Yeah, well, I just turned a definition that wasn't brought up before, so, pulling up some other definitions based on...
Do we wait, or do we move on?
It'll be about one minute.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd probably best have the applicant go first, or the appellant in that way, and then public comment can happen after that, but we should get moving.
Yeah, I really, the music.
Sorry, my limpingness, but I'll pull this up in one second here.
She wants the Jeopardy music. I mean...
Well, the response was that, originally was that, as they stated, one, that it was a commercial structure and that there was no residential use. Then, they filed an amended denial based on a mixed-use combination. Now, at the hearing, we're being brought definitions of single-family dwelling unit that had not been provided prior to the hearing. So, I can state unequivocally that the definition of a dwelling unit is defined as a single-family, a single-family dwelling unit is a dwelling unit utilized for the use by a single family. Here, you have a structure that has a single-family dwelling unit located upstairs. They have applied for a single-family dwelling, for a vacation rental use of a single-family dwelling unit. No one can contest that it is a dwelling unit. No one can contest that it's a single family, because it is not a multifamily, which would be multiple units for multiple families. They're now trying to state, because somehow downstairs, there's a structure, it changes what the upstairs is that is being utilized for the single-family unit. This is a new argument, and so I have to, I can pull the state statute on it, but normally, when the local ordinance does not define it, you refer to state statute, and the definition of the state statute of the dwelling unit is a unit that is utilized by a single family for residential purposes. And in this case, the upstairs is a single-family dwelling unit. The application is for the vacation rental use of the single-family dwelling unit. So, going into the appeal, my client is 81641 Isla Marada LLC. This is an application for a vacation rental license. The address is 81641 Old Highway, right along the highway. The address is 81641 Old Highway, right along the highway. Agreed that it's Vacation, sorry, Village Center, and that it's mixed use. Mixed use is permits, vacation rental use. And the denial was vacation rental unit means a single-family or multifamily residential unit or mobile home that operates for vacation rental use. Nowhere in the definition of a vacation rental use does it provide that it is the structure. It is the unit. The unit, in this case, is the upstairs. Your code does define several things. It defines family as an individual or two or more people related to each other by blood, marriage or adoption, or no more than six unrelated individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit. This definition does not apply to a group occupying boarding house or hotel or motel. There is no dispute that the upstairs is utilized as a single-family dwelling unit. It's not a multifamily. There's not two units up there. It's a single-family dwelling unit. Downstairs, it's commercial use. Residential use is also defined, as applied to any lot, plot, parcel, tract, area, or building, means used or intended for use exclusively for residential dwelling purposes. For the purposes of the Building Permit Allocation System, Transfer Development Rights, only hotel and motel units are included. Vacation rental, defined, a single-family or multifamily residential dwelling unit. Doesn't say single-family or multifamily dwelling structure. It says unit. The unit is the upstairs. Or mobile home that operates for vacation rental use. They're applying for the vacation rental use of the unit, the upstairs. Additionally, a vacation rental use is defined as the use of a single-family or multifamily residential dwelling unit or mobile home that is rented, leased, or exchanged for a period of less than 28 days. Right now, the dwelling unit is being utilized for terms longer than 28 days. The application is for the vacation rental use, which reduces the time the dwelling unit can be utilized to less than 28 days. Otherwise, the unit doesn't exist. It's either a single-family dwelling unit, multifamily dwelling unit, or it's not a dwelling unit. It would be either a hotel room, motel room, mobile home, or it doesn't exist. No one is contesting the residential use doesn't exist. In fact, in 2019, this property was subject to a letter of understanding, specifically identifying the existing residential use. Moreover, they inquired about using the second floor for vacation rental use. And of course, they stated, hey, you have to comply with the value of the property, and you have to comply with the application process. Nowhere in the OU does it say, hey, this is a structure that has commercial downstairs, residential upstairs, you either have to abandon the commercial use downstairs, or it cannot be utilized. Because the reason is, in 2019, correctly interprets, they can obtain a vacation rental use if they meet the criteria. In fact, they even talk under paragraph four about the commercial use downstairs and using it and the single residential use upstairs. But again, the vacation rental use was never talked about, that it could not occur because the structure had commercial downstairs and a single-family dwelling unit upstairs. Nope. Now, at that time, this is a little less applicable, because now it's being agreed to that there is a residential unit upstairs. It's just somehow being claimed that the residential unit is a single-family residential unit. I've never heard of something that's not either multifamily, single-family, or some, a mobile home. But here's the floor plan. Shows the two bedrooms, shows a kitchen, complies with the requirements for a single family to reside in the dwelling unit. It's wholly contained, single-family residential dwelling unit with a staircase that's its own entrance. Not part of a commercial unit. Plans were approved. It's been in place. This is the history that we just went through. Originally, the denial was it was a commercial structure. Then, after we filed the notice of appeal evidencing that it was a residential use, the change was now it's because it is, has a commercial use downstairs, that it's because it has multiple uses, it's no longer applicable. The fact of the matter is, the upstairs is a single-family dwelling unit. There's no other definition. Otherwise, you would not be able to call it a residential use. You have single-family dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, mobile homes. Those are the three types of residential use you have. It is a single-family dwelling unit. It can be currently rented for periods of more than 28 days. They've applied through the procedure required for vacation rental use permit, which allows you to rent less than 28 days. And they meet the requirements, which nobody stated the structure isn't worth more than 600%. They're in the mixed-use flume, which is required. And so therefore, the permit should be granted. Thank you.
I just would like to remind one thing. We didn't even get to the point of determining whether or not the structure met the requirements, because we denied it immediately. And the determination of valuation would be difficult in this situation, because the property appraiser doesn't distinguish floors in valuation. They just, they value the entire property. And so you can't value a commercial piece of property for a vacation rental license.
I, one, this is outside the scope of the denial. I would object to going into.
You brought it up.
You opened the door, so.
Okay, well, let's go, ready? Let's go into this then.
Can I get some clarification, Madam Mayor, from the appellant?
Certainly, please.
Is it my understanding that you're not contesting that this is a mixed-use residential property? You're just saying that the parcel on the upper portion is single-family dwelling unit, and the portion on the lower half of this building is a commercial?
And the LW from 2019 even identifies that.
Okay, so this, so, but I'm just saying, we're in agreement that this is a mixed-use residential property.
Yeah.
But you're carving out the two different uses.
There's a single-family dwelling and upstairs. There's commercial downstairs. Tomorrow, I can file a declaration of condominium. The upstairs residential dwelling unit would be a single-family residential dwelling unit separate. If you would like that to be the solution to how you value the upstairs, I'm happy to do that.
Now, the reason why I ask for that clarification is I would just, under section 30-1293, which talks about vacation rental uses of residential properties. And it says, "The vacation rental use of a single-family and multifamily residential property within the village shall be allowed." It doesn't talk about a vacation rental use within a mixed-use property. So that's why I was asking for that clarification. And I think it's important to.
And so, there's vacation rental units being utilized right now by a property down the block that is both commercial and residential. There's a hotel that has five vacation rentals permits issued for inside the hotel. This is not the only circumstance where these have been approved and utilized annually. The fact of the matter is, you have a single-family residential dwelling unit upstairs, which is the specific requirement of the code. Your application is to rent within seven days. If what they wanted was, well, we need a mechanism to value just this, that's, that would be a different situation, that we may not be even having this appeal. What they're stating, what the appeal originally was, there's no residential unit. File the appeal. We get, they pass that. And then it's, well, it's a multi, there's no single-family residential dwelling in it. So that's what we're here to under. And so we believe your code provides, this is, there's no other types. There's single-family dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, mobile homes. Those are your residential uses. Then you have transient uses, which are hotels and motels. I don't think you have, you have RV parks, too. Those are transient units, too. Those are your two different types of residential use in Isle Marada. Otherwise, it's not residential. And so we have a residential unit. It meets the criteria for vacation rental use. And so with that, we request that you overrule the determination of the denial. If what we need to do, then, is go back and work with them on evaluation, that's fine. But that was never the impetus of the denial. And so we can't address things that aren't in denials. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Smith right now? No? Okay, thank you. All right, I believe we should open public comment for it?
Yes, ma'am.
For is first.
This one's not quasi-judicial, so you can do, we can go in any.
Marnie, does anybody?
Yes, we do. Van Cadenhead, followed by Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller will go first.
He's tall. I was glad to hear him differentiate between whether this vacation rental license is for a structure or for a unit. I agree completely that it's for a unit. An effective January 1st, 2023, no new vacation rental units in mixed-use future land use map categories can be registered unless it's assessed at a value in excess of 600% of the current median, which would mean that the rental unit, not the structure, has to be assessed at over $700,000 in order to get a license. The entire property in question is assessed at 847,995. So to subtract 100, or 700 from that, that would mean that the downstairs would only be worth less than 150,000, and the upstairs 700, in order to be eligible for a vacation rental license. The council and the community continually talk about the critical need for workforce housing. Ideal location is above retail space in our downtown area. Certainly, denying the vacation rental license would not guarantee long-term use of the residential space. But issuing a vacation rental license would guarantee the dwelling will not be available long-term. I think that you need to accept the word of your planning department. Thank you.
Marnie?
Thank you, Sid.
Next is Van Cadenhead.
I completely, this is Van Cadenhead. I completely concur with Mrs. Miller. And the discussion that we had with our charrette was about building workforce housing above commercial establishments. And this property's been there since I was in high school. And somebody's lived upstairs, Red's Barber Shop or whatever, was downstairs. But when Hop Along Smith, he got, he's got some bone spurs. I guess he caught them from Donald. But the problem with this is, it's going to take away a piece of Isle Marada that could be workforce housing. And when Mr. Smith put up his diagram of the second floor of the property, there are two bedrooms, and there are also two bathrooms, which means that it doesn't have to be a single-family dwelling unit. It could be a duplex workforce housing unit up there. You could have two people, two separate people, rent a bedroom and a bathroom upstairs. I mean, the possibility is up to the planning department. It's up to somebody smarter than me. But just to take this off the market, when it's been recommended by Able Cities East and by people over the years, sitting up at the dais, that we have workforce housing over the commercial housing, and then to try to change this, I think that the, what's in the charter, what's in the law that we're following that's just been read, that Mrs. Miller just underlined, it definitely excludes making this a vacation rental. Because it's right on, it fits every, all the prerequisites for workforce affordable housing. And I think instead of just having one, we could actually have two. If you look at the fact that there's two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a large common area for a kitchen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Marnie?
There's no one else sign up?
Okay, public comment is closed. Counsel, discussion? Go ahead.
So when I look at section 30, 1291, it talks about the intent and purpose. And it says, "The intent and purpose of this division is to protect single-family homes and then residential neighborhoods from adverse impacts on vacation rental uses." It, I, I, you know, I remember all of these older buildings that were kind of live, work, and play buildings. They were built, they were built as the owner's unit or the manager's unit above the business part. And the people back then were a lot smarter than we've been in the past years, because that's what we should have been encouraging for a long time. I think that, I think that the intent of the code, when it talks about to protect single-family homes, is not talking about protecting multi-use buildings. And I think that it's a slippery slope to start turning these things into vacation rentals. So that's how I feel about this.
Steve, Anna, Deb, anything? Good?
So this, back when these buildings were built, we didn't have the category of affordable workforce. We built that mom-pop bedroom above the business. There was lots of them. And the intent was for it to be an apartment for somebody. As time grew, mom-pop moved away, but it was still an apartment for somebody. I, the mixed-use idea, it seems fairly clear in the code to me, and I think the interpretation was right, that we need to protect, we need to protect where these, where these belong, where they go. This, the intent of everything was for those to be, and I don't necessarily want to classify it affordable workforce, but an apartment for somebody to rent, whatever category that is. Hopefully, it would be affordable workforce. But whatever category it would be, not to be a vacation rental. So I'm inclined to also not think it's a vacation rental property.
Anna, Steve, anything?
Well, you know, it's a shame that everything comes down to money. It just is. We know we need workforce housing, and I have a building, commercial downstairs. And I looked into putting two units upstairs. And to make them affordable, we have to figure out something, because I'd be 135 before I got my money back by doing affordable. So we do have a serious problem with vacation rentals. Let's just be honest. Bring in much more money. And so that is more attractive than renting. But we have to be smart enough to realize that if we continue to go the path we're going, we're not going to have anybody down here to do anything. So I'm leaning towards the same thing that these two have. That I feel bad, because, and this is why we need to redo this comp plan, because that slippery slope is, needs to be defined better. So that's my feeling.
Don?
I also want to touch on what Ms. Miller said, that the latest number out says that the median income in Monroe County is 118,000. And you multiply that times six, and you get 708,000. You're not going to get an upstairs that's valued at the amount that the code would require on an $847,000 building on 708. So I'm sure that Barton wants to say something in closing, but I don't, I think this is a loser.
Well, even if you don't consider, because that wasn't part of the originals, Jennifer said that they didn't even get to the evaluation side of it. That's what it was, we have been pushing for upstairs apartments since I got here. And encouraging it and figuring out how to change the code so you could do more density if you did something like that. This is, this is one of those perfect places that fall into that category. Bart didn't make the argument, but the math says that it probably wouldn't evaluate out anyway. But that's not what the appeal was about.
You don't want to say anything? Okay. All right, Bart, do you want to say anything before we?
Look, every, every community talks about affordable housing, especially in the Florida Keys. But someone's property. But someone's property rights for a non-restricted dwelling unit does not mean because you desire more affordable housing that you can say, hey, we wish this was used for workforce housing. But that's, and I understand that sentiment, but it's property rights. And you have a person that if you deny it, it's because you're saying that it's not a single-family dwelling unit, because that's a single-family dwelling unit. That's, that's what this appeal is about. And so these discussions about the bigger picture of affordable housing are not supposed to be about what is at stake. Right here, you have a vacation rental application for a single-family dwelling unit. That is the decision that's before you. If you look at the code, it meets the definition of a single-family dwelling unit, that upstairs, and that was the basis of denial. There was no other basis that was provided.
The basis of denial, the way I understood it, was the fact that it was a mixed-use, and mixed-use is, with commercial, isn't that.
And, and the code specifically provides that vacation rentals permitted of single-family dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, and more mobile homes. And so it's-
But it doesn't say mixed-use. And it does say, it does say it has to meet all the other qualifications along with it.
That was not the basis of the denial.
Okay. Okay. John, do you want to say something?
I was just going to say, there is a provision in the law, it's called the Tipsy Coachman Doctrine.
I knew, I knew that. I was, I was just going to say that.
Yeah. So I just, sometimes there, I just, I bring this up because of the point that I think Mr. Smith is making, is saying that you're limited to either granting the appeal because of a, what he views as a more limited interpretation of the code. I don't, I don't think I agree with that. I agree, tend to agree more with Councilwoman Gillis, that it's a broader interpretation. But there is a thing in the Florida law that says, even if the lower, just tribunal got it wrong, got it right, but for the wrong reasons, it can still be supported. I'm not saying that's what happened here, but since this is being brought up, and it seems like it might be brought up for appellate purposes, I do want to put that on the record as well.
I love the Tipsy, I love the Tipsy Coachman Doctrine, just because of the name. I'm not going to disagree with that, that's what, that's what it states. I just fundamentally believe that there's a due process requirement that denial provide the basis of denial, the basis of denial that was that it is not, it does not meet the vacation rental definition, which is a single-family dwelling unit.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yep.
Ms. Miller and Don both did the math. I mean, if they're saying the size is not going to work, why would you even continue on this?
I disagree. I think, I think that if we created a condominium out of it because assessed value would have to re-reset to market value.
Wait a second. What do you mean create a condominium?
Yeah, so you can, Florida law allows you to, Florida law allows you to condo anything, you know? So you can condo this building, condo the parcel. Upstairs would be then a single property with the yard. And the weird thing about your code is, is for some reason, you guys wrote it, whoever wrote it, and I agree that it needs to be updated, because the idea of utilizing assessed value, where assessed value is based on whatever exemptions and caps on increases in value occur, whereas fair market value is the value of the market where a willing, what a willing seller would pay a willing buyer in an arms-length transaction, which is what the property appraiser actually values things at. And so when you, when, the difference between assessed value and fair market value is capped because of the statutory of 10%. So you actually have a cap. So anytime you have a transaction, even a transaction to create a condo, it resets value to fair market value. What happens if you reset this property to fair market value? The fair market value of the upstairs will easily exceed the requirement for a unit. And so if we were sitting here and the argument was about that, I certainly would come in here with a value of the fair market, the assessed value and fair market value being equal because of the creation of the condominium, and we would be, we would satisfy that condition. But that was not what the basis of the appeal was. And so we would, we would assert to you, it's a single-family dwelling unit, it meets the requirements, and we request that you find it in our favor. Thank you.
Okay, Deb, is there anything else so we can move on? No?
Well, he alluded to the craziness of our vacation rental code, which it is, but we're not changing it because we want to keep it.
Holy, get that, holy get that part.
So we don't need to go there on that, but I still, I still think that the definition that, or the determination that Jennifer did is proper in the mixed-use idea and the commercial and the single-family, the, it was supposed to be a freestanding, it was supposed to be in a condominium maybe, or something like that, but not in this context.
Okay.
And just as a side note, I think that John may understand, you guys are allowed to loosen your vacation rental ordinance without losing it. Just throwing it out there, that's the discussion today, because that assessed value is just asinine. Yeah, there was a case that actually decided that.
You good? Okay, all right, well then, okay, go ahead.
No, I was just, in closing, I was just going to make a motion.
Go ahead, thank you very much.
Or I was going to.
We good? Yes, we're good.
Okay, based on the testimony and the evidence presented tonight, I want to uphold the denial.
I'll second it.
Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay, John, moving on to Tab B.
Yep, Tab B is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, approving residential BPAS rankings and awarding residential building permit allocations for quarter one of 2025 and providing an effective date.
Jennifer?
Thank you. I'm here this evening with our first quarter 2025 residential market rate building permit allocation system allocation award. Pursuant to Section 30-475 of the Code of Ordinances, the Village Council is required to take action after reviewing the building permit allocation system evaluation report. Pursuant to Resolution 24-11-131 adopted on November 19th, 2024, two market rate residential allocations were made available for 2025 through BPAS, and one market rate with outland dedication is available for distribution in quarter one of 2025. At the close of quarter one, 50 applications for market rate residential permit allocations were in the BPAS queue awaiting building permit allocation awards. The market rate residential applications have been evaluated, scored, and ranked according to the criteria outlined in Section 30-476. The application recommended for approval is permit number PRSFC 2021-00428 filed by Ruiz George Alberto on June 21st, 2021 at 12:53 PM for parcel ID 00394486-001100. At this time, we recommend that the council approve this award of allocation.
Okay. Marnie, public comment?
Yes, Mr. Bishop, excuse me, Mr. Wishmeyer. It's hard getting that out, huh?
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. You know, I've said this a number of times here before, that we're in the process of redoing our LDRs and our comprehensive plan, and we are running out of BPAS allocations. We don't know what the state's going to do, we don't know what the county's going to do. So at this time, I would highly recommend that we hang on to what we got and we wait until the new comprehensive plan and LDRs come out before we make any more land decisions. Thank you.
Marnie, anybody else?
No, ma'am, that's it.
Okay, public comment is closed. Council? Deb?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. She beat me to it. I'll second it.
Okay. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
No.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
And, excuse me, Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes five, four to one.
Okay, John?
Yep, Tab C is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, approving non-residential building permit allocation system rankings and awarding non-residential building permit allocations for quarter one of 2025 and providing an effective date.
So again, this is our first quarter 2025 non-residential building permit allocations. Pursuant to the Village Code 30-475, the Village Council is required to act after reviewing the building permit allocation system evaluation report. The available total of non-residential square feet for allocation in 2025 is 43,104 square feet. This is the first allocation for 25. There is one application for non-residential BPAS in the queue awaiting an award in quarter one. The proposed resolution approves the non-residential building permit allocation system ranking and awards pursuant to the Comprehensive Plan Policy 1-3.1.11 and Village Code Section 30-476. The non-residential applications were evaluated, scored, and ranked according to the criteria outlined in the Village Code Section 30-476. One application from the non-residential BPAS category is recommended for approval and identified as PRBLD 2024-00516, submitted by Castaways of Florida LLC, received on January 16th, 2025 for parcel 00405380-000000. They are requesting the amount of floor area of 1,478 square feet. At this time, we recommend that you approve this allocation award.
Okay, and I see, Don, you're not allowed to talk, so you're not in this.
I'm not.
Kidding. Marnie, public comment? I'm kidding.
Do not have any public comment for this item.
Okay. Council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
I abstain.
Oh, thank you, yes. I have that already in the vote. Called you anyways.
Well, I'm going to do it on all five, too.
Yeah, I know. And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four to zero.
We are in the quasi-judicial portions, so I'm going to read the quasi-judicial information. Please be advised that the following agenda items are quasi-judicial in nature. If you wish to comment upon these items, please inform the village clerk by filling out the available sign-up form. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. As a reminder, testimony in quasi-judicial items must be in person. Zoom testimony is not permitted. These proceedings will be handled in accordance with the Village Code requirements. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony shall be disregarded. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the council to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. The full agenda packet on each item is hereby entered into the record, along with the Village Code and Comprehensive Plan. Any correspondence that was received by the village staff is included in the file and part of the record. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedures in Section 30-256 of the Village Code may be obtained from the village clerk. Today, there are four quasi-judicial items, which are Tabs D, E, F, and G. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who intends to speak on the quasi-judicial items tonight to please raise your hand to be sworn in by the clerk if you intend to speak at all. And again, these are Tabs D, E, F, and G.
In the matter about which you are to give testimony, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? The witnesses have been sworn.
Madam Mayor, there are, while there are four items, two of them, there's really two, there's companions for each one. Historically, we've taken them together when they've been companion items. Is that something the council would like to do tonight as well?
Everybody okay with it?
Okay, so I'll start with D and E first then.
Ma'am?
And D is an ordinance of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Winley Cove LLC to amend the village's future land use map from residential medium to mixed-use for the subject property located on Winley Key with real estate number 00405350-000000 as legally described herein, and to allow the parcel to be included in Policy 1-2.11.4, Winley Key Mixed Use Area 2, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. Tab E is an ordinance of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Winley Cove LLC to amend the official zoning map from residential single-family R1 to highway commercial HC for the subject property located on Winley Key with real estate number 00405350-000000 as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. These are ordinances on second reading. Council, before we begin, I would like you to please disclose any ex parte communications that you may have had with the applicant or anyone else. Again, this is going to be on Tabs D and E. Please include whether the person represented in any group or entity, as well as the subject matter, as you recall. Thank you.
Deb?
I said on the LPA when it came through on the first time.
That's okay.
I said on the LPA when it came through on the first time, and back then, I believe I spoke to that nice young lady back there.
Okay, Don, you're out.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Anna?
I don't believe I've spoken to anybody about it. I've spoken to Jocelyn about the property, just doing the survey work, but nothing that I can recall about the vacation rental or the change.
Yeah, a recent text with Jocelyn, just inquiring about the property, not really anything to do with this.
Okay, and I haven't spoken to anyone either. It's the first time.
Councilwoman Gillis, you said that nice woman, it looked like you were looking at Ms. Tiedemann?
I was, I'm sorry.
All right, we're ready to proceed.
Okay, I believe we start in four?
Yes.
Wait, you have the applicant's going to make, or I'm sorry, the planning director will make her presentation, then the applicant, and then, yes, you're correct, we start with everybody who's four afterwards.
So I don't really have a presentation this evening. As you recall, this is second reading for these ordinances to rezone the property from the residential medium flum to a mixed-use flum, and from R1 zoning, residential single-family zoning, to highway commercial zoning. You recall that the purpose of the zoning change is to allow vacation rental use of this property. These were heard by this council on first reading on December 12th, 2024. We sent the flums to the Department of Commerce for the coordinated state review. We received their letter with no objection, and that has been in your packet, attached to your packet. So I have nothing else to add, there's no additional information, and as always, or not as always, but at this time, we recommend approval of these ordinances as was approved at first reading.
Now, should I ask if Jocelyn wants to get up and say anything, or yes or no?
I would just, I'll say if you have any questions, all of them, may just say.
Okay. Okay, then, John, we're going to move in favor?
That's correct, yes.
Marnie?
I have no speakers in favor.
Okay, now we're going to move to all opposed. Marnie?
First up is Van Cadenhead.
Good evening, council. I remember when this first came to the LPA, I was on the LPA as well. And it was initially, the building permits were issued for affordable housing with Mark Gregg proposing that they would be used for affordable housing. And Ty Harris was our planning director at the time. And I did not think that the property fronted on US1, which is one of the stipulations. And so I voted against it from the LPA. And since then, it's now residential medium, which, there's two, there's two beautiful homes there. And Mark Gregg sold them to his daughter, Jocelyn Tiedemann, and her husband. And they have a beautiful pair of houses there that would be really nice for somebody to buy. Whereas to turn them into vacation rentals, you're going to arbitrarily give a huge reevaluation of the property because they'll be worth so much more as affordable housing. And I object to also you arbitrarily mashing these two things together, because you're denying me three minutes to speak against all four of them, which would be 12 minutes. You're saying that I should only have six minutes. I think that's unfair, and I don't think that, I mean, if you want to do that, that's fine, but if you allow us to speak for six minutes per item, then that would be 12 minutes, which is what we're entitled to. You're trying to cut our comment off in half just by arbitrarily mashing- You're trying to cut our comment off in half just by arbitrarily mashing these things together. And I think that you've done it in the past, that you're modus operandi. It's unfair and does not reflect any kind of equality or fairness in the ability of the public to speak to something like this. Now, I've spoken like this before, and so have many other people. So I would hope that you would allow us, in retort of this, I mean, it looks like it's a done deal. I mean, it looks like I'm just up here, you know, flapping my gums for no reason at all. But the thing is, the public is being cheated out of the time that they have. There's four items. We should have four items to be able to speak to four items at three minutes apiece. Instead, you're going to mash them together and say, "Well, you get three minutes," you know, "and that's all you get." Well, I don't think that's fair.
You got your three minutes.
I got my three minutes, and I'd like another three on the next one, too.
Marnie?
Next up is Joe Wishmeyer.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Before I start my comment on this, I know that the attorney said that I'm allowed to ask some of you to ask some questions. So I guess before I even go with any of these, because it might be a moot point, my contention is that this particular parcel was sold in January, so it's not even owned by Winley Cove LLC anymore. So therefore, by them applying for this to get the zoning change and the land use, I believe is a moot point because they're not even the owners anymore. So I would like to ask somebody who would know, is, am I correct in that assumption? Seems how they're not the owners, they should not be applying for this.
John, I'd like an answer, please.
I'm not sure if they're the owner or not, but certainly an owner can give, and anybody, make them an authorized agent to apply for them. I mean, I believe they were the owner at the time of the application, at least.
So you can transfer it, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Would that require a written power of attorney or something, saying that they're allowed to do that?
I think Ms. Tiedemann's here, and if you have a question as to whether she has the entity has the authority to apply, we can ask her.
Okay.
Okay. Well, and starting then with the public comment, I remember when this first came up, we went into a whole thing.
I know it was.
Because they started in with saying it was fronting US-1, and then I think they wanted to put two units on each property. And then we got into all kinds of discussions, and then we had to come up with the definition of fronting, and we did that. And they did end up building, and like Van said, they're two beautiful homes. They knew what they were getting, and they were built, and at that time, they did get them as the market rate. So they knew all along what they were getting themselves into, so to now go all of a sudden for vacation rentals, I think is inappropriate. I would also like to reiterate on the fact that at the last meeting, I did say that y'all should come up with something that, if you do combine several things, that you ought to come up with a ruling for that. This came up with, especially with the Islander properties, where we all had a lot more to say. And Mayor, you did give us a couple extra minutes on that one, but it seems like we don't get too much on all the others, so we need to come up with some sort of resolution for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Marnie?
There's no one else signed up to speak.
Okay, public comment is closed. Counsel?
Well, first of all, I'd like to reiterate that those houses were not built with affordable housing allocations. They were built with market rate. There was discussion of, early on, when Mark owned it, of putting affordable there, but he abandoned that idea, did not move forward, did not get the allocations for it, and there was the proper applications for market rate on that. It's true, and I've showed you the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with that.
So therefore, that part isn't relevant in my book. They didn't get the allocations to be affordable. You can't change an affordable into a vacation rental, so.
Yes, ma'am. My point--
Wait, wait, wait. Where'd you come from? Sit down.
Public comment is over.
Public comment is over unless he's being cross-examined, which Ms. Counselwoman Gillis is not doing, so public comment is over.
Thank you. Have a seat, please. Deb, go ahead.
The fact that we made a special area use so that the only additional use that was allowed on this property and the next one that we'll talk about was the vacation rental, they don't get any more identity, they don't get to do any of the other stuff. It's only to qualify it for a vacation rental, was a carve-out that I think we should use. This property sits right on US-1, it makes sense. They are beautiful homes, so I will be supporting this.
Anna?
I'll just motion to approve.
Steve, do you have anything you want to say?
I'll second.
Okay, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
And just, we're going to do each one separately, so is this a motion on tab D?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, for tab D, Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Horton is abstaining, and Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve tab E as presented.
Second.
Ms. Marnie?
Okay, Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four to zero.
Okay.
I don't want to get that stain on me.
I got you that time.
Okay.
So I'll read tabs F and G, and again, these are on second reading. F is an ordinance of Isla Marata Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Winley Isles LLC to amend the village's future land use map from residential medium to mixed use for the subject property located on Winley Key with real estate number 00405360-000000 as legally described herein, and to allow the parcel to be included in Policy 1-2.11.3, Winley Key Mixed Use Area 1, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce. Tab G is an ordinance of Isla Marata Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request of Winley Isles LLC to amend the official zoning map from residential single-family to highway commercial for the subject property located on Winley Key with real estate number 00405360-000000 as legally described herein, providing for the transmittal of this ordinance to the State Department of Commerce and providing for an effective date upon the approval of this ordinance by the State Department of Commerce.
Jennifer, do you have anything you want to say?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Jennifer. Before we begin, counsel, would you please disclose any ex parte communications you may have had with the applicant or anyone else? And again, this is on tabs F or G.
Deb?
Mine is the same as the last one. I sat on LPA when it first came through, and I spoke to Jocelyn in that timeframe.
Steve?
Same as before.
Anna?
Same as before.
Same as before.
Thank you. And my presentation is the same as before. This was heard on first reading on December 12th, 2024. The village council adopted the ordinance. It was sent to the Department of Commerce. We received a letter of no objection. It's been in your packet. At this time, we ask that you approve the second reading as in your packet.
Okay. I guess we'll start with in favor?
Unless Ms. Tiedemann has any presentation.
I don't think she's shaking her head no, so. All right, so, Marnie, in favor?
We have no speakers in favor.
Okay. Marnie, not four?
For the opposed, we have Van Cadenhead.
What I would, I'm Van Cadenhead. What I would like to have said, I realize that these are RM-zoned houses that were built, but the original building permits that came before the LPA were for affordable housing. And to me, to switch from affordable housing permits into RM is disingenuous, and it was like changing horses in the middle of the stream. Now, Mark Gregg is a really good land use attorney. He knows what he's doing. He did it the right way. I'm not saying there's anything illegal about what he did, but it was surreptitiously done with the presentation of the LPA was for affordable housing, was not for RM. But the RM is where the houses got built. And so now that they're built, as we have pointed out, they're gorgeous houses, and now you want to probably double the price, double the value of both those properties by allowing them to also be rented like a motel, you know, by the week or by the day. You know, the Islands of Isla Marata was supposed to be a vacation rental, but not a motel, and now you can rent that by the night. And you can do the same thing with this. It's going to be like a wonderful $2,500 a night motel. And if you want to let disingenuous action at the beginning of this, it's a house built on sand, boys and girls.
Next up is Joe Wishmeyer.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Just the same thing that I said about the last ones, but I'm not sure that we got clarification as to whether or not the new owner gave them permission to do that or not. So to avoid a problem later on, I just thought you might want to get that straightened out.
Thank you. Marnie, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, public comment is closed. Counsel?
I'll make one comment.
Please.
When it came in front of the LPA that I sat on, it was brought to us as presented tonight, so it was not brought forward as affordable project. That had been scrapped. I don't even think that they, I know that they didn't have allocations for it, so. That being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Does anyone else have a comment?
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve tab F.
Anybody else have anything to say first?
No, second it.
Okay. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Okay, for tab F, Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Horton is abstaining, and Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion passes four to zero.
Okay, moving on to G. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Marnie?
Okay, Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Horton is abstaining, and Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion also passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Now on to the easy stuff.
No, well, I was asked to take just a five-minute quick break.
Oh, sure. Oh, that is the easy stuff.
That's easy stuff, so I'm not Buddy Pender. Five minutes is five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Everybody have a seat, please? Let's start. Okay. I'd like to say something before we start, if that's okay. I have sat on council now for two, two years and something, and I've been through the rollercoaster ride of managers. And I know, Deb, you've been on council before, but when there's a divided council on the candidates, I have a problem with that big time because to me, the manager should come in with a 5-0 vote, not a 3-2 or a 4-1. And not that I ever want to quote Mark Gray, but he did say, "We should all be united." I have a concern that whomever is selected for this job, if it's not a 5-0 vote, you'll probably be gone at the next election, just because it seems to be the pattern. I wish, Steve, and I owe you an apology, that I should have, I want the best candidate for this community. And I do feel, and I did tell you, Terry, Jamie, that when the fourth candidate dropped out, I was concerned about only having three. I wanted to bring others back in because this isn't, this is our decision, but it's a community's decision. And it's a decision that we have got to make, that we all agree on. And I'm very concerned that there's going to be split vote, and we're going to be looking at a divided council again, or a manager whose lifespan is not going to be that long. I want to put it out there that I would like to reconsider other candidates at this point. And I know you guys probably all don't agree with me, but I'm having a really hard time with this because I think we're going to be divided. And I think that's a horrible way to go into this. So I wanted to say that. And at least I know, whatever happens, I'll go along with the council. I'm happy-go-lucky and easy to get along with, but I want, okay, Van, I want the community to get the best person, the best candidate, and for this person to stay for more than the next election. Because whether we like to admit it or not, some of us will be here two years, will run again, some of us will run for the hills in two years. So there'll be new people up here, and I've seen what happened with Ted, and I saw what happened with Rob. So I just wanted to clear my conscience and say that, so. Anybody else want to say anything?
I'd like to kind of tag on to that. Yeah, I have sat on councils that we've had to pick managers. This town is known for picking managers. There's been lots of reasons why managers leave and all that, but what I want to say is that because of the kind of personalities that usually you'll sit on a council, and not picking on Isla Marata as a whole, you've got A personalities. And Sue mentioned it earlier, if we don't disagree on things, then something's wrong. That doesn't mean that I don't think we need to all be on board with a manager at the end of the day. But I do think it's very difficult, probably impossible, to get on first blush, first vote, first consideration, all five of us to be on the same page. We've all developed a thought pattern of what we want, what we like. And I know Sue said that all of them in the past had a 5-0 vote. I don't believe they all started with a 5-0 vote. I do believe that when we took the final vote, it was a 5-0 vote, that we said, that that says that, yes, we will support this manager, yes, I can live with that manager. If we do today, if we do some kind of straw poll, and we're all over the board, or maybe it'll come out that it's, you know, it's four to one or something, I don't, I don't know what that would come out, then make that determination of whether or not, maybe the person, or the two people that, I'm going to assume a two, three, maybe the two people would go, well, you know, I really like that person, I can live with that person, and I will support that person. But I don't want somebody to vote for somebody just to support, I want them to back the person. But I think it's only fair for all of us to have an opportunity to, I just, I just don't think five A personalities are going to come up with one person on first round without some discussion or something.
Steve?
Yeah, Sharon, I appreciate you bringing this up. I've been saying along that I want the very best candidate, I want the very best manager that we can possibly get. I think we have three outstanding candidates right now, applicants that have graciously thrown their hat in the ring and are probably wringing their hands quite a bit over this process. And I think we owe it to the public to, to make a more exhaustive search and do some more interviews to find out if indeed we do have the three very best candidates.
Anna?
I think I'm happy sticking with where we are. I think we have three fantastic candidates. They're all local, they know the issues, they know what happens here in Isla Marata. Every time everybody goes outside of the county, outside of the state, it always ends up that they don't stick around, they end up leaving, they don't understand all the dynamics that go on around here. And so, and it's not fair to those three to continue to drag it out and torture them in that, in that light.
I don't see it as torture, I see it as picking, getting the best candidate. That's just my opinion. Go ahead, Don.
So I've been with the village, started with them in 2000. We had a manager that was, had some longevity, he came from South Florida. We had some longevity with his replacement, which was Bernie, and he came from South Florida, he lived here in the Keys. Then we had a string of, of managers that came from other places, and they didn't last very long. We had Maria fill in and fill out, fill in and fall out, fill in and fall out. We end up with Ken Fields. He didn't last very long, he didn't come from South Florida, he didn't come from Florida, and he didn't last long. Then we ended up with a staff member who didn't last all that long. And then we ended up with another string of folks from out of South Florida, out of, out of Florida, that was, seemed one right after the next, after the next, after that. I think a lot of managers that come from somewhere other than where they, from here, from South Florida, don't realize the expense, how exclude, you know, how we're excluded from the rest of the country, we have a different mindset. Sue can pick on me all she wants, and all she's got to do is call and ask her to help her after a hurricane, and I'll be there with her, I'll be there for her. And, and I, you know, that's, that's what, discourse is good, arguments are good, and I don't disagree with that. I think that we were really lucky this time, that we, that we got five people that have a Florida experience, and whittle that down to really three that are, you know, are, are home folks. And they are all very qualified, their resumes are awesome, and I think we're making a terrible mistake if we don't choose one of them. That's where I go.
May I tag on? Because mine wasn't about whether or not we should go back out for, for more interviews, because I am satisfied with the three that we have also, I'm willing to pick from the three. I was just trying to address that, I just think it's really difficult on first vote to come up with one name five times.
100% consensus.
Yes. That's all. I would, I would prefer to move ahead with this tonight and, and stay with, I've sat on all those councils with, with people from out of state, and they try, they're good, they're, but it just didn't always work. There's been a variety of reasons why council, or why managers leave. I think if you charted it, it was never the same thing, so it'd be really difficult. But I do think there's a mindset about South Florida, particularly the Keys, that will, I think we ought to try it. I really think, it's in my heart that we should try one of the three qualified candidates for tonight.
Okay, so Steve and I are outvoted, which is fine, so how do we, let's move on then.
Does anybody like my suggestion of the first, first round? I'm just asking.
I forgot what your suggestion was, what, what is this?
Of, of like a, a paper vote, a straw vote, of just to see where we are.
It doesn't matter, whatever everyone wants to do, I'm fine with what everybody wants to do.
I'm not clear on it.
You want to write it on paper?
You're not, I just, I, just, just to go, just do a vote similar to what we did on council. But, but it won't, it won't be tied, unless it's a 5-0. And I, I just think it's important for, for each of us to be able to say, okay, so this is the personality that I thought. And then if we figured out that, okay, three of you are already in one corner, or four of you are in one corner, then the other person can go, yeah, I can do that. Or, no, I can't do that. And then we can discuss whether it should be a unanimous vote to move on. Does that clear that up, what I was trying to say?
Let me see if I got this. So you want to write a name down?
The first round.
For, and if there's, if there's three of one name, then that's it?
No, that's not it. Because it has to be an official verbal vote. It has to be, the tally vote cannot be.
Can you jump in here, please?
Yeah, there would need to be a formal motion to select Person X as the manager, and then authorize staff to negotiate an agreement to be brought back to the council, unless, unless the candidate was willing to sign like the same agreement Mr. Cole had, and then you all could obviously say, we're willing to agree to that, authorize the manager to sign. Obviously, we'd have to replace the start date and the name, but the material terms would be the same.
So.
But there does need to be a formal.
We all write down a name on the paper, and it comes three to two or whatever.
Then, then we know that we really have a, if it's three, one, and one, it could be anything. It could be, well, we don't have five names, we could have three different names, though.
Whatever you guys want to do, I'm fine with.
I don't care if he wants, if somebody wants to make a motion. But I just think it would, it, the council needs the opportunity to, and that, that vote is, it has to be made public, the paper vote has to be made public, clarify me if I'm wrong, eventually, but not necessarily on that very first round. It, it just works that we go, okay, we're all thinking on the same page, or no, we're all over the place.
She's already cutting up paper.
I know.
The answer on the vote is yes, eventually, eventually it is a public record, so it'd have to come out, if you all wanted to do it where you don't know, as we sit here today, I mean, we all would, obviously, it's a public record, eventually people would know. But if you want to keep it amongst yourselves, of just have Jamie say X number for person, you know, this number for Person X, this for Y, this for Z, we can do it that way. Again, for, for public records purposes, and so the public's aware that your name will be on it, and, and we, that will be available to everybody.
Let's just do round one paper.
That's what I'm saying, just round one.
Let's just, we'll start somewhere.
Yeah. Doesn't matter.
We promised not to go through a reema paper.
Well, I only brought so many, so.
You actually brought these.
I came prepared, just in case.
You're like a Girl Scout.
I am like a Girl Scout, I am very prepared.
And you're just voting for one, right?
Yes, only voting for one, right?
That was how I believe you all decided to do it.
Just, just vote for one is what I envisioned.
And you gotta sign your name, right?
And, yeah.
Absolutely, their name will be on it, absolutely.
We see who signs the checks.
We see who signs the checks, you know, they're all. Thank you. Thank you. We had three votes for Ron Saunders and two votes for Jennifer DeBobrian.
I actually said I thought it might come out.
Yeah, I do too. All right, so.
I'll make a motion to offer Ron Saunders.
Wait a second, I want to have a discussion first.
Manager.
I'll second that. Now we can have a discussion.
You can still have a discussion, absolutely.
Jeez Louise. Somebody want to say anything? No?
You, you want to say something, say something.
You could also, if you weren't ready yet, you could open it up for public comment, if anybody has signed up for it, I'm sure.
Yes, we do have speakers for public comment. Okay, we'll start with Van Hayden, Van Cadenhead, followed by Joe Wishmeyer, followed by Dr. Harold Dalton.
It's a 3-2 count, and the picture winds up. Well, you've got a quandary. We've got a very important decision that you all are making tonight, and I wish you luck with it, because Isla Marata needs a steady hand on the tiller. And we must have stability, we must have someone who's going to be here for a while with longevity and experience. So I'm not going to speak for any one of the three candidates, I'm just going to encourage you all to look within yourselves and, and see which one that you think you can work with of the three for an extended period of time. Because whoever gets this, I sure would hate to see them blown out of the saddle in a year, and just because of 3-2 votes. You know, we need to have some kind of unison, we need to have some kind of conformity, we need to have some kind of stability. And if you can examine the 3-2 count, it's either going to be four balls and you walk, or it's going to be you're struck out. So, so let's make sure that we get, swing for the fences, folks. Thank you.
Marnie?
Next up is Mr. Wishmeyer.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Councilwoman Gillis, I believe you are correct, that the first manager, there was a vote, and it was four to one, so it was rejected. And then it came back until they actually voted 5-0 to make a unanimous choice. So bottom line is, all of our managers have been elected with a unanimous vote. Even though you're 3-2 now, I think that the main thing that you guys really need to consider now is what I mentioned earlier, who has the most administration experience? Who has the most experience running a city or a village on a day-to-day basis? I believe there is a big difference between the candidates. I'm not going to say which one should be here, or which one should be there. You all have done the interviews, you all have all the information, so you can decide amongst those questions who you think would be the most qualified, because, like I say, financially, and our day-to-day, our future is going to depend on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie?
Next is Dr. Harold Dalton.
Good evening, counsel, and thank you for your service. I'm going to disagree with this unanimity thing. Quite frankly, it is, if it's a 3-2 vote, it's a 3-2 vote, three win, and it's the obligation of you elected officials to work with the new city manager, even though you lost. It's not up to, hey, I didn't vote for them, I'm not going to work with them. No, you've got to be professional, you've got to work with who won. Now, that being said, and I know the other speakers have not had any recommendation for a new city manager, but quite frankly, I do. There is only one of the three applicants, and there, I took the opportunity last night to meet with the applicants, they're all outstanding, I've read their CVs, they're all qualified, I think they'd be great. But that being said, there's only one that has decades of public service to this area in. in the municipal, the county, and at the state levels. There's only one that has a deep understanding of the current and historic issues affecting this community, and has extensive contacts and relationships that will provide immeasurable value to the citizens of Isla Marada, and that's Ron Saunders. And I urge you, you've already voted 3-2, if you want to make it unanimous, that's fine, but he'll be an amazing village manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie?
There is no one else signed up to speak.
Okay. As I was saying, does anybody else want to say anything? No? Deb? No? Okay. Motion to second, Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yep.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes 5 to 0.
Congratulations. Or deepest sympathy, one of the two.
Now, just, so that was a motion to select Mr. Saunders to, to be the next manager. The next question is in terms of timing for us, is it a direction for council to, or legal council, sorry, a direction for legal to negotiate with Mr. Saunders for an agreement? Or is there, and I guess this is more of a question for, for Mr. Saunders, is, is one of our agreements that we have, with a prior manager, we have amenable to him that we could replace his name and a start date, and then if that's the case, I would ask for a motion authorizing the mayor to, to sign such a-
Well, here's a question, and nothing against anyone here, but is there, okay, let's take the contracts for past managers who haven't been from here, can, like, can we, is it automatically the same amount, no matter what, or can we make some suggestions and-
If it's not going to be exactly the same, my recommendation would be for us to negotiate an agreement to be brought back for you all at a future council meeting for approval. Because if it's, if we start making adjustments here kind of on the fly, there might be other things that, that the council may have wanted to adjust, so if it's not going to be exact, my recommendation would be that, that it just be a negotiation.
Let me see how everybody else feels. Anybody else want to change anything, or look at it differently, or we're just going to go with what we got?
And obviously, that would be subject to Mr. Saunders agreeing to that.
Of course, of course, of course. Go ahead, Don.
So we already have it in the budget, what the salary was under the previous manager? And unless it, unless there's a problem with that, I'd say we stick with the same salary, we're not amending our budget, and, and then we can see what happens when we start going through the budget cycle, but I say we just be continuous with the, with what's in the budget at this moment.
It sounds like that would expedite the process a little bit as well.
And that would also include the-
That would expedite the process as well by doing it that way.
Yes, you're right, it sure would, yep.
And that would include the housing allowance, right?
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Well, talk about that.
Well, he said not to.
Oh, okay.
Well, we, if, if we want to negotiate the housing allowance, then, then we need them to do that.
Go ahead.
Because he's local.
He's, he's motioning to me.
He's motioning.
Maybe I could provide some clarification. First off, thank you very much, all five of you. I, I pretty much knew somewhat how the vote might go, but I know all five of you very well, and the 5-0 vote means a lot to me, and I'll work equal with all of you. As far as the agreement, I agree with the council, I think the most transparent thing for the community would be to know what it's going to be in advance. So my suggestion would be, there was an Exhibit A to Resolution 24-3-26.
I'm listening to him.
And that was Mr. Cole's. And so what I would suggest, put my name where Mr. Cole's was, use a start date of April 21st, 2025, an expiration date of one year, April 20th, 2026. So everything stays exactly the same, the wording's all the same. Now, during the budget cycle, which comes up in a couple of months, I'm more than willing to take another look at any changes, but I think in order to expedite this and get some stability going, because I know Ms. Denenourt would love to go back to her full-time role as our building official, I would just say, just move with the Exhibit A to 24-3-26, it was Exhibit A, and that, I'd be happy to go with that.
So, so if we do that, his start date would have to be at the next meeting, right? Because we have to approve the contract?
No, well, no, and actually, Mr. Saunders was proposing a start date of 21st, and if-
I, I heard that, but I meant-
If you approve it tonight, though, it could be ineffective.
Yeah, what we could do is, if we're just replacing, I mean, literally, the material terms of the agreement are remaining the same, we're just replacing Rob Cole with Ron Saunders, and, and a start date will change.
An end date, yeah.
I think we can make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement under those terms, because the terms, yeah.
Maybe.
Please, please, Matt.
So I think we could do it that way.
And, Ron, you, you, you'll be able to start on the 21st, that's very quick.
Yes.
That's two weeks.
I purposely, I, you know, you never know what's going to happen, but-
As long as she's got that figured out.
I thought this might come up tonight, just in case, and I said, that's, give some time to transition with Sheila, for me to find a place to live here, because I committed to be a resident of Isla Marada, that doesn't happen overnight, but I think within 10 days I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
John, anything else?
Yeah, I would just ask for, for a motion to authorize the, the mayor to sign a-
Nope.
An agreement with Mr. Saunders, identical to that which was executed by Mr. Cole, obviously with replacing the start date and the, the name.
Do I make the motion, or does somebody else?
Anybody can make a motion, yeah.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to do what he just said.
Yeah, ditto.
Okay, Marnie, do you need to call the roll?
Hey, Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anna Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Can I say one last thing?
Go ahead.
Just one quick thing.
I have one quick thing, too.
Sheila, you've done an awful, awesome job at filling in, and-
You only said awful.
Awesome, awesome.
You only said awful.
That's an S, there's an S. And I want to thank you very much for your hard work.
I do, I appreciate it. You've been a pleasure to talk to.
And the support of your staff, so thank you.
No, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity that I was given, and it's an experience I won't forget.
And, and I, I would support that completely, too, and I would also ask that the council, now that we've said this, that we dedicate ourselves to making this work.
Yep. All right, meeting's adjourned.